Everybody. Hey, everybody. This is Frank Abrazino with the Scoop, and I am here with Liz Barker, and she is running for the Sarasota County School Board. So we're going to let her talk a little bit about herself while I share this on other networks. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thanks, Frank. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with your folks. Yes, I'm Liz Barker. I am a mom of four kids in Sarasota County Public Schools. I'm a former school psychologist. I'm the president of the PTO at Lakeview Elementary School, and I'm running for the school board because what I saw is that on our board, I hear a lot about parental rights, and I do believe that parental rights are incredibly important in education. But right now, we don't have a voice on the school board. There's no one with skin in the game, quite like someone who is actually living and experiencing public schools every single day. And I think it's really important for parents to have a voice and a seat at the table when it comes to decision making around schools and our children. So I'd love to serve as that voice.
Okay, great. So we're going to go ahead and ask her some questions. And as I do these, it's live, it's not edited, and it's whatever I ask, if she wants answers, she can. If she doesn't, she doesn't have to. I'm going to start off with the hardest one, and she probably expects this coming, or suspects it is, and it's about the whole gender issue. And there's been a lot of questions out there about Biden's Title, what is it, Title 11 regulations, which would allow nine, allow boys in the, to use the girls' bathroom? So let's get that tough one out. Where do you stand on that?
I, I do not believe men should be in girls' bathrooms. I don't. What I will say, though, is that I believe that there's a reason that that narrative, a very emotionally charged narrative, is being put out there particularly by these dark money PACs, developer-funded PACs. Because while we're all focused on fighting about who uses what restroom, what questions are we not asking? Why, you know, for example, so these are some of the things I'm wondering about. Why do we have eighty-three point three fewer teachers in the budget for next year? Why have we paused construction down in Wellington Park? How many long-term subsidies do we have in our schools? I would love for us as a community to say, I understand that this is an emotionally charged issue. There are lots of opinions about it. And is this distracting us from some very real issues that are also happening in our public schools? And are there areas that we could come together and make progress there?
So here's two things. The Wellington Park, I didn't know that was paused. Why is that paused?
Well, I assume it's paused. No one knows for sure, because we're not talking about it.
Okay. All right.
But it is, it is currently paused. I can only assume it's because we are anticipating for the first time in quite a long time, a drop in enrollment in our public schools. And we have sort of an uncertain budgetary future with the Esper funds being sunset this fall. So we have a very different budget outlook than we've had in the last several years, a much tighter budget.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you some questions on the budget in a second. But the other part is the shortage of teachers. I know one of my buddies was in the military. And so two questions. How's that veteran training or teaching program? Do you like it? Is it working? What would you do to try to build the gap that's missing, all the teachers that are missing in the system?
The veteran program has not been particularly successful. Veterans, I think, are saying, no, no, thank you. We would not like that job.
This veteran win money.
Right. To some extent, I understand that. It's a very challenging job. It's not necessarily compensated in a way that you can make a full living, especially in a place like Sarasota. So it hasn't been a particularly effective way of bringing in new teachers. But what I think is really important here in Sarasota, we have very strong starting pay for the state of Florida. You know, in general, Florida is fiftieth in the country for average teacher pay. But in Sarasota, we have a relatively strong starting salary. Where we have some trouble is as you get in more years of experience, and this happened to me when I was an educator. After four, five, six years, you can't afford your daycare. It doesn't make sense to continue, particularly if you're a mom. It doesn't make sense to continue in that role, because you, you won't be making enough to cover the extended needs when your family grows. So I think it's the teacher retention that is something that we haven't talked a lot about. We talk a lot about teacher recruiting and getting new teachers in the door, but then how do we keep them here? And I, it's not very transparent, honestly, how many teachers are leaving, where they're going, why are they leaving? And so it's hard for us as concerned citizens to, to know and to have data about what is happening behind teacher retention. I know when I talk to teachers, there's a lot of talk about, well, I could make twice this at a foundation, or, you know, it just doesn't make sense. I have to drive in from a different county because I can't afford to live in Sarasota and work in Sarasota, so I have to drive in from Charlotte County or Manatee County. So, so I think teacher retention is something that we need to focus a lot more on.
Well, let me ask you on this, on that. And I'm sorry, I'm looking for questions. If you guys have questions, you can post either on the page or the group, and I'm trying to find them now. On the retention, what would you do for the, for the teacher retention?
Yeah. So one of the big things that teachers talk about with me is the climate for them. They have felt very unsupported by our current school board. And I know there was a survey done last April where teachers, over eighty percent said they felt unsupported by the current school board, and over sixty percent actually feared retribution if they were going to talk about those concerns. So we already have a profession where we've never paid teachers enough. That's not new. But now on top of it, we have this section of folks, and some of them are on our school board, who are promoting this rhetoric about teachers being indoctrinators or groomers, and that's just simply not true. And I would invite anyone in our community who's concerned about that to apply to be a substitute teacher, to come join your PTO, to read in class, be a classroom volunteer, and really see what happens in our schools every day. And I think a lot of those concerns would be alleviated.
Okay. One other question that we touched on the gender, but I forgot to ask on this, because it is something that I've seen typed your name before. And it's the LGB, LQBPQ, no, LGPTQ, whatever that acronym is. And pushing that, it's their content in the schools. I've seen that a few times with the concern. So if you want to stress that head on, I think it's important that people know where you truly stand. Because I see people that don't like you saying stuff. I see people who like you saying stuff. So I don't know where you, where, what's true.
You're never going to make everyone happy. That's true. But I assume, are you talking about some sort of like LGBTQ agenda?
Well, it says, supporting groups that have pushed everything from explicit content to schools to allowing boys to play in girls' sports.
So, I mean, what I will say is I have children from incoming kindergarten to incoming eighth grade, and I have never seen any sort of curriculum around LGBTQ issues. So I'm not sure that that's, if those folks are seeing that in schools, or if it's a more emotionally based talking point that's kind of out in the community right now. I do think that every child should be treated with dignity and respect, and I think we do a pretty good job of that here. I think that children should be able to see themselves in literature. I think it's important to have diversity in their book selection. I think it's important for anyone in school to feel like they are supported, like they can be educated. And I just, I don't see some nefarious agenda being pushed by our teachers. And again, if you feel that that is happening, join us. We, you know, the PT, my PTO, we partner with churches, we partner with small business, we partner with grandparents and parents, and we invite all the help we can get. Because when it comes to educating our children, it's an all hands on deck event.
Now, one concern, I don't even know if this is related to you, but just in schools in general, you know, I get concerned about, I have a new grandson, and my-
Congratulations.
Yeah. And my concern is that the schools will take action or direct the children to do something without the consent of the parents. And I keep reading that a lot. I don't know if it's an issue in Sarasota, to be quite honest. What are your feelings on that? Shouldn't, shouldn't the parents take a vital role in any decisions that the kids are making, or being made about for the kids?
Yes. Parents should have a vital role in all sorts of decision making, and we do. The caveat to that is, right now, and, and I really think, because we don't have this voice on the school board right now, of anyone who's in these schools, living this day-to-day existence, people don't know. But the fact is, really what parental rights looks like right now in Sarasota is the staff of permission slips this high. I, you know, between my, I, last year, I had one, it's still in preschool, but this, you know, this year, I assume it'll be even higher. I signed permission slips for everything from my daughter, Emmeline, goes by Emmy. So I had to sign a permission slip for that. I signed a permission slip for every classroom library. I signed a permission slip for every novel that my seventh grader read.
Is that, is that true, drop the flipping in Sarasota?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that. All right.
Yes. I had, I had permission slips. I had to get notarized, Frank.
Really?
Yes. I had to go to this Wells Fargo right here and get it notarized, before a school board meeting, so that she could go on the field trip.
I didn't realize that.
Yes.
Let me ask you this. You, you keep saying the involvement with the parents. And I get, it seems like every time I hear about the school board, I hear activists on the left and right that are taking up all the time. And one of the complaints I've heard about parents that just want to go there and say, hey, look, this is my kid's situation, and be able to communicate with the board, aren't getting the chance, or that's being overshadowed by activists.
Yeah.
And I understand public comments, and I've been in politics for a long time. What could you do to try to hear these people and their concerns, so they're not drowned out by the activists?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I think we spend an awful lot of time spinning our wheels, chasing our tails, arguing about the same thing. And I think part of the reason we see that on both sides is because no one actually feels heard. You know, I've been going to school board a long time now, talking about things that matter to me, talking about things that matter to my community and district too. And the school board, the majority of the members there, they completely disregard anything they have to say. And they don't answer emails, they won't respond to your questions or your concerns. And so I think, at the end of the day, none of us feel heard. So we keep feeling like we have to come and say it again on both sides. So I think if we were to truly hear people, respond to their concerns, take them seriously, I think they're going to get a lot less of the, you know, what you talk about as being activist, coming down, because that would mean the board's functioning correctly. You know, if the board is functioning correctly, we don't have a lot to say. But when we see, you know, division and chaos and distraction, then we feel like we need to speak.
How about the politicization of the board? You guys, this is nonpartisan.
Yes.
It seems very politicized.
It is.
What can we do to try to tone down that end of it? And I understand politics coming into play, especially the school board, a lot of this stuff's been going on.
Yeah.
What can you do, if you're elected, what will you do to try to bring it down some?
Well, I think part of that is that we have, we don't have any parents on the board, right? We don't have anyone with that lens. Now, listen, look, all of you already know, I'm sure, I'm a registered Democrat. My husband is a registered Republican. I've never been particularly involved in politics, you know, even in the school board until fairly recently. I wasn't really paying attention. When it functions well, parents are so busy, we're just taking our kids to baseball and to dance and tutoring, that we're not necessarily paying attention to the political aspects of it. But now that it's not functioning well, now you have our attention.
Let me ask-
And you're stuck with us.
And you're stuck with us.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, Robert Serena asked, what are you going to do to address mental as, mental health issues in the school, specifically suicide awareness?
Oh, I'm so glad you asked that question. I, I'm a former school psychologist, so that is very near and dear to my heart. Mental health in our schools has, you know, children have been struggling for quite some time, and honestly, it's gotten significantly worse since COVID. And the fact that we currently have board members, like my opponent, Karen Rose, who has said, and I quote, "We have never, ever been in the business of mental health." Number one, that's wrong. That is not true. And number two, it's, it's dangerous. Schools with strong mental health supports are safer, and their children achieve at higher levels. So it's incredibly important that we, we don't treat mental health in schools as something that's suspicious or problematic. It's really important to understand that students don't learn in a vacuum. They can't do their best work in a vacuum. They don't come to school with the same experiences. And we have to be able to meet them where they are, period.
All right. And why is she dod, why is she just dodging the question asked?
What, what would I do about suicide prevention? I would promote it in schools. And I think we could also bring a lot more mental health. If we want to address mental effectively, we could start earlier, and we could continue on, as opposed to saying, oh, we don't do that here, farming it out to our community partners who are excellent. But we share responsibility for our children's mental health in schools, and, and we should be addressing it.
All right. And if you did come on, you guys, some people just asked, asked her about the LGBTQ thing, and the boys in the bathrooms and stuff, and girls' bathrooms. She addressed that at the beginning. So when this ends, you can go back to the beginning. I did, I did ask her, because I think, I think it needs to be out there, and she did address it.
Absolutely.
So then I thought was interesting, I was watching a documentary, I think, documentary, I think it was on Switzerland, and he was a foreign exchange student here, and he noticed the biggest difference between the United States and there is, we have multiple choice. And there, they have to take a test, and they'll answer the question. There's not multiple choice.
Yep.
I know in Italy, I have two sisters and nephews and nieces there, and when they go to college for their exam, they'll take, let's say, science, and they got to spend five hours addressing questions that they're from barter class. What would you, what would you do to try to make it more challenging for them? We're not saying, okay, you got a twenty-five percent chance of getting this right if you select the right multiple choice answer.
Multiple choice has a place in learning, but I agree, critical thinking requires so much more than closed option, multiple choice exams. And we are not always focused on teaching students how to think. Sometimes we're really, really focused on teaching them to do well on a test, because that's how we measure. That's part of our metric system. And now, I don't know if you know, but we actually, my students are testing all the time now, because we test kids three times a year now, instead of just once. So we test them in the fall, the winter, and then again in the spring.
Okay.
So we're constantly preparing for a test, or taking a test, or, you know, doing test prep. And I would love to use the data that we have about the science of learning. We talk about the science of reading. We use the data around the science of learning to promote sort of more critical thinking skills, more written expression. Students really, we don't have a cohesive curriculum in the area of writing in Sarasota. And I think that's important. I, I think children need to be able to explain themselves. And if they're going to answer questions that are not just multiple choice, then they have to learn to write and express themselves that way. So, yeah.
Okay. Somebody did write in, they asked, where'd it go, about support of, okay, do you support ending the funding source for private schools? If so, for families, how about low-income families on the program? And would you be willing to tell Sarasota County families that they do not have access to programs? Not sure.
Yeah. No, I think what they're maybe referring to are universal vouchers in the state of Florida. And in years past, prior to HB1 being passed a couple of years ago, it was an income-based program. So it was for families who were lower income, but who perhaps needed a different educational option for their children. And I think there's a place for that. At this point, though, we have universal vouchers, which means it doesn't matter how much money you make, you can collect over eight thousand dollars to send your student to any school you want, or homeschool them. And what we find with that is that it's a little, it's about seventy percent right now of folks who take those vouchers, we're already sending their children to private schools. So we are, in fact, using public school money to fund private schools.
All right.
And I, I think there should be a lot more guardrails around that, so that it really does serve the students that it's intended to serve. And I think we could do a much better job accounting for those funds.
This is one, and I don't even know where Karen stands on this, because I don't recall. It's on the mask mandates. And this was near and near to me. I refuse to wear a mask.
Okay.
And I didn't participate in the vaccine or none of that stuff. So I guess it's important, because you hear a lot about this bird flu and the other next virus around the corner.
Okay.
Where do you stand on mandating vaccines, maybe ostracizing children that won't get vaccinated, which did happen in Sarasota County in some schools, and the mask mandates?
Okay. Well, I'm sure whatever I say here is not going to make everybody happy. But as a parent myself, I chose to send my children to school during those months of COVID, that year of COVID. And I got a lot of flack from some of my more liberal family members and friends who said, you can't, you know, send them to school. I did, I did ask them to wear a mask, because we, we have family who's elderly, and my youngest daughter was born at twenty-eight weeks. So she was only two pounds when she was born. So she's pretty, she could be sort of fragile in terms of her health. So we chose to wear masks. But again, I think, I think as a school board member, your job is to follow the law. If there's, if there's a law around it, then we follow the law. But I, I think it's a parent's choice whether or not they vaccinate their child. I, I think, if we're going to be serious about parental rights, then that's a job for the parent to decide.
All right. And I don't know what this is, maybe you do. Someone's asked it twice about Equality Florida. This one says, boys in girls' bathrooms. Again, I don't, I guess they, they want to know if you'll, if you're going to accept their sponsorship, or-
Their endorsement?
Endorsement, yeah.
I, I don't have a-
I don't know who they are, but perhaps you do.
Equality Florida, yes. They are, yes, they are a group that sort of promotes safety and well-being for the LGBTQ community.
Okay, all right.
And, yes, they have endorsed me. And I think that's because they know that I'm someone who believes that every child deserves to have an education and be treated with respect. And it's not my job to decide whether that child is gay or straight, or, none of that matters. What matters is, if you step foot in Sarasota County Public Schools, you will get the same excellent quality education than anyone there, period. That's what Karen-
They want to know what, this person wants to know your, how, what your thoughts are on the superintendent. I think he just got a big day raise.
Oh, did he?
Do you support him? Are you happy with him? I don't, I think, he got it three to two, if it means a vote.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on, on him working with him?
So I think Mr. Connor has done an excellent job. And he, the thing about him that I really admire is his ability to remain student-centered, even in the midst of the very chaotic political discussions happening around him. He does make decisions in the best interest of students. And I admire him about that. I would very much like to work with him. I think he has done a good job. The only thing I will say here, and this, I do feel like I have to say this, because teachers and my friends who are teachers are coming to me about this, and they said, we like Mr. Connor, we think he's doing a good job. But it has been hard. It has been really hard for schools. We were, you know, under one administration, and we had a gap here, where we didn't really have a full superintendent. And now we're going in a slightly different direction. And anytime you have an organization as big as Sarasota County Public School, you know, moving in one direction, trying to get there, and then you put the brakes on it, and you try to change tracks, it's a lot to ask of teachers who are already underpaid and overworked. And there's a lot of pressure around passing the standardized tests.
Standardized tests. Holly asked, how will you ensure nothing from the Bible is taught in our schools? Where, where do you stand on the separation of church and state?
Well, I wholly support the separation of church and state. I think that's very important.
Some loaded questions on this.
Very important. And that's fine. That's fine. I think it speaks to the fact that people are emotionally invested. If you teach the Bible as literature, then you would be able to have critical discussions about it, and, and I'm fine with that. But I don't think we should be promoting one religion over another. That's, that's, I don't believe that to be the best course of action for our public schools.
Okay. The reading plan, I was reading this, how the county's reading plan to increase seven percent for third graders. I don't know why. I guess there's some milestone in third grade. It seems like that's always the grade they're focusing on.
Yes.
What, what do you think of the reading plan to increase the reading scores, and what else can be done to increase those scores? I didn't see anything about mathematics, and I'm assuming there's a plan in place. So what are your thoughts on, I guess, mathematics, English, across the board?
Yes. So I actually, I thought the reading plan was excellent, that the literacy plan that Mr. Connor and his team came up with, and I think we're already seeing some results there. As I said, as I kind of alluded to before, I would love to also talk about writing, and math, and science, and civics, and social studies. Reading is incredibly important. And I think the reason we focus on it is because it tends to be a data point, a marker that is predictive of future success, predictive of graduation rates. But what I will say is that we do still, in Sarasota, have a fairly large gap in achievement between our ESE students, those are our special education students, and our regular education students, and their scores. We have a pretty big gap there. We have a gap in our English language learning students, and our regular students. And we have a gap in terms of our students of color, and our white students. And so while I'm, I'm very pleased to see those scores trending upward, I do think that we need to dig into that data a little bit, and figure out where we can support those groups of students that are still not meeting those benchmarks.
What, how about the program? And I can't remember the acronym. I think it was EAS or something like that. When we lived in Italy, we came back, my daughter forgot a lot of the English.
Okay.
So she was placing the program, because she's-
Yes, she.
Yes, she, yeah. But I've heard some issues where it's not supported, and there's concern with it. So what are your thoughts on that program?
Yeah. So I actually have two students who receive services through Bible for Plans. So I'm pretty, you know, intimately acquainted with the process. And I do think that we could do a much better job of expanding our continuum of services. We don't have a ton of options for sort of those students who are bright, but maybe not achieving up to their full potential. And we don't have a ton of services for students who fall in that mid-range of, they really are not disabled to the extent that they need a out-of-school program, an Oak Park or something. But they're struggling in their regular classroom. And so I think expanding the services to cover more of our students effectively would be really important. And as a school psychologist, that's a lot of what I did. You know, I looked at data around learning and cognitive processing, and where those gaps are, and how to address them effectively. So I feel strongly about that.
Okay. Brian asked, who's the best superintendent Sarasota has ever had in your beginning?
I, I don't know that we could say that. You know, I think Mr. Connor's done a good job. I think Dr. Aslan did a very good job.
How about Bowden?
Didn't love him. Wasn't, wasn't first on my list. But I think Dr. Aslan and Mr. Connor are both excellent leaders, and, and-
Now, Aslan was basically run off, wasn't he?
He was.
What for? I don't recall. Sorry. I don't recall.
Well, that's a great question.
I don't remember.
Karen Rose made the motion, a few minutes into the new board being seated.
All right.
She asked the board to consider terminating his contract.
What was the reason?
And, well, the reason she gave it a time was that she couldn't work with him.
Okay.
So I'm not sure exactly what that meant. And I know a lot of us, myself included, you know, tried to get answers about, well, what is it exactly that you're concerned about? I know teachers were very upset, administrators very upset, families very upset. But the board really didn't hear us at all on that, and they went forward. And, you know, what I will say is, we saw the same thing happen across the state and across the country. We had these mean, very conservative boards come in, and there was, there was clearly some sort of agenda, because people were finding their superintendents left and right. And I don't-
I'm conservative now. I mean, there might have been an agenda. I don't know. I've kind of backed off from following schools as much, but I don't remember hearing one, but there could have been one. Who, who knows? Keeping our campuses safe and secure. I wasn't behind. I did not support the police being taken under the school system.
Okay.
I don't know. How, how well is it doing? Is this on you? Supports? Did you support it? Do you continue to support, I guess?
I do think that policing the schools is very different than policing the community, and it requires a different skill set. You're working with children. And it requires an ability to work with families in a way that isn't necessarily the same in the community. And so I've spoken with the chief of police. And so I've spoken with the chief of police, um, in Sarasota County Public Schools and he told me about the different sorts of trainings that his officers, um, have to go through de-escalation training, understanding, um, children's brain development. And all of that is important. Um, when I was working as a school psych, I was always in and out of the SRO's office. I mean, we worked together very closely. His kids were my kids, my kids were his kids, that's just how, how it goes. So, um, I think, I think the data supports having-
Having it within the school system.
Having specially trained school resource officers.
Okay. How about on, uh, teachers? I think last, maybe last week, two weeks ago, I put up about, uh, Sarasota High School, I believe, selling cocaine. Um, we got another teacher that actually went to school with one of my daughters, I think, and he's a high school teacher and he was trying to have a romantic affair with one of his kids. What can we do about, I guess, I don't want to impugn all teachers and say, oh, they're all of quality, there's two bad apples and the barrel doesn't make the barrel bad. Well, what can we do to try to get better, a better role model, a teacher that's not going to be out selling coke or trying to pick up our kids? And I see constantly where teachers are getting arrested for molesting kids or trying to have an affair or trying to do sexual related relations with kids. Where do you stand on that?
Well, I think if we, if we treated teachers better, we would get higher caliber of folks. We're so, we're desperate for teachers, you know? So I, I do think that that's part of it. If you, if you, if you treat your teachers well, then you're going to be getting the highest quality teachers. That said, um, schools, churches, anywhere where you have children and then you have adults in a position of power, those are victim rich environment and they do attract folks, you know, to, in some instances, to, um, you know, who do not have good intentions. So that means that us as educators and being part of an education system, we have to be particularly aware of that, cognizant of that and, um, making sure that we are all doing everything we can to keep our children safe, to make sure that they are comfortable coming to us if they have a concern, uh, to make sure that our families are involved and engaged. And, um, you know, anyone who's in a, a role with children like that, um, there should be a lot of safeguards in place, a lot of guardrails. And so, you know.
Okay. Um, embedding accountability into the budget process, that's one of your goals on, on your page. So how would you do that? Um, what, what would you take out of the budget? What would you decrease? Where would you increase?
So right now, um, what I have found difficult is that the budget still is not terribly transparent for, for just a regular community member like me. So the first thing I'd like to do is really go line item by line item by line item and see, you know, where is this money going? There's always, um, a huge, most of the money in any school budget generally goes to salaries. Um, but, you know, I really need to understand better what that looks like. And I'd also like to know, again, how many long-term subs do we have? Do we have more or less than we had in prior years? I think all that information is important. I'd like to know, um, when students leave our schools and come back, you know, what does that look like? Do they need extra help? Um, all of that sort of, um, information is very difficult to come by as someone who's not on the board. So if I was on the board, I would need to get all that data.
So would you make it more transparent for the?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I understand you getting the data, but you'd make it transparent so that the parents have more access to it.
Yes, I think it's very important for parents.
Um, you know, this came up and I, this per, it's the same person. He asked about, um, would you do, would you have D E I in departments at school? And I don't know if that's in the district, I don't know if that's up to a board or the superintendent, but he also asked about, I said, I think on books you said you wouldn't ban them?
No.
Um, the concern is, and I think this goes back to that DeSantis rule about the gender and some of the sexualization, um, that's in, in some of these books. Where do you stand on that issue? I'm assuming you're going to follow the law that's been put out. Even, like it or not, is that?
Yes, yes, we follow, we do, we follow the law. Um, here's what I'll say about book banning.
Oh, and they also asked diversity in book selection as you go on.
Yes, yes. So when I said diversity in book selection, I was referring to, you know, children of color, children from all different family structures, they should be able to see themselves in books. I think that's incredibly important and I think that, um, children should have the right to a diverse collection of books. So let me tell you from my perspective what's happening in our schools. Sarasota County Book Schools has not banned any books. That is, to me, good news. But the truth is that although we haven't banned any books, my children do not have access to the same curri, to the same materials that they had access to two years ago. So for example, last year in seventh grade, my daughter was supposed to have, uh, the children's version of the New York Times Magazine for her civics class.
Okay.
I signed the permission slip. We got an email the next day from the principal saying, sorry, we pulled it, it's just too risky.
Okay.
When I ran the book fair this past year, uh, for Lakeview, I was setting up the book shelves and I said, I feel like we had more books last year. What's going on? Where are all my books? It turned out that another parent volunteer and our media specialist had decided to opt us out of an entire collection of books that had, you know, Ruby Bridges, for example, was in that collection and books about, um, children of different races, of different family types. And the reasoning was not because we had banned those books, but because it was just too risky. So there's this sense of, um, self censorship that's happening in our schools and I don't believe that's appropriate either.
So why do you think it's self censorship? Is it because they're concerned about violating the law, the state law?
Yes. No one wants, you can now sue a teacher directly if you don't like the book that they promote. And that, no. Um, and, and that doesn't lead to better educational outcomes.
Okay. Um, what else? Um, you want to, you know, and they keep, I keep seeing politics, politics, and I think you already said you're a Democrat, just like Karen is a Republican.
Yes.
I've seen Karen at R E C meetings where I go sometimes. Um, I'm sure you go to Democratic meetings, so.
Well, I haven't before.
They are asking about that, so I'll, I'll throw it out there. I don't know if that matters.
Yes, I am a Democrat and I'm married to a Republican, for what that's word. Um, I consider myself to be very centrist and I'm sure that, uh, the decisions I make, because I'm very moderate and I make decisions based on what I think, uh, is best for children, maybe they'll make people on the left mad, maybe they'll make people on the right mad, but I have no interest in politics. I don't believe they have a place in our schools.
Well, that was the next thing here, take politics out of our schools. So what would you do to take politics out of schools?
I want to shift the conversation. Let's stop talking about who using what bathroom and let's talk about why we are losing eighty-three point three teachers next school year.
Let me ask you this, so if you win, you and, um, Tom Edwards, he's a Democrat, you, you guys would, I assume they would separate how it usually does on the board. What would you do to try to rein in Tom, who can be a little excessive sometimes? And I, I've seen them sometimes go overboard. Would you try to, would you try to say, look, let's work with them and then try to reach out across the alley to, um, Ziegler and Maroney and the other guy?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I don't, I know that everyone feels very strongly about what letter comes after your name, but at the end of the day, this isn't about Democrats versus Republicans, this is about educating children. So I don't care who you vote for for president, I don't care about any of that. We are perfectly capable of focusing on students and, and focusing our decision-making around students. And I will work with anybody, anytime, just like I'm meeting with you, you know?
Yeah, and she, guys, I do give her credit, she didn't have to meet with me and I hope I'm being fair, but they're, and they're legitimate questions that are out there.
They are legitimate questions and I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to address them because I think far too often we stay in our own little echo chambers and our silos and we don't hear each other out. And then we're not, um, you know, we're not making the most of our collective experience when we're not hearing each other out.
Um, I guess one more thing and then we'll, we'll see what I missed and then you can go in with the closing. But it says ensuring systems to grow academic excellence, that's on your website.
Yes.
So what systems would you want to grow to ensure academic excellence?
Yeah, thank you. I think, um, we're moving in that right direction. Data-driven decision-making is really important. Before Dr. Asland was fired, he had started putting into place, um, P L Cs, which are professional learning communities, which is an evidence-based practice that's been in place decades now, actually, across the country. But that had sort of fallen off the map a little bit in Sarasota County, so I would like to absolutely get back to, um, helping teachers make database decisions and work together as grade level groups. And I think in order to do that really effectively, what the research shows us is that teachers have to be able to be vulnerable. They have to be able to say to their, you know, teen teacher, listen, you did a better job teaching this standard than I did. Can I come watch you teach this standard? Would, you know, can you come do a demonstration lesson in my classroom? They have to be able to collaborate in that way. And right now, teachers are feeling so on edge, so fearful, anyone could be fired. If you can fire the superintendent, you can fire anyone.
Why are they, why? You know, I'm, I've, you said that twice and I'm trying to figure out why? Why, what, what's causing an environment like that? Is it the school board here?
Yes.
And I, and I got to tell you, I've, I've stopped communicating. I remember one time, there's a psychologist-
Yep.
And he got, he was driving down number seventy-five, wrong direction, a hundred and eighty miles an hour, got arrested. Well, I found out through a very good source, I got the docket number, everything, that he was going before the judge in December for sexually molesting his foster child. I contacted the school board, they blew me off. I contacted several people there, informed them about it.
Yep.
I got chastised by everybody. A year later, they find out it's accurate when he's, um, now he's doing time for it. But it's like, it's, it seems like there's a problem at that school board to me every time. And I, I stopped communicating with them when I have stories because I think they're going to lie to me. I don't think they'll be honest when I ask them questions.
Yeah, I, I agree.
As a, as a reporter, journalist, whatever people want to call me, if I have a story, I, I won't go to them anymore because I don't get a straight answer.
I, I think that feeling is shared among families across the aisle. We, we have not had good experiences with the majority of our school board members and we don't feel that they're transparent or honest. And, um, the fact that, you know, they have these connections now with big developers, they're funding their campaigns, um, I don't find that concerning.
Dive into that one after you're done.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry for interrupting you, it's the developer end of it, because I think somebody had asked something and I was trying to figure out, well, how does a developer come into school board? And maybe I'm missing the piece, so when you're done with that, with your thought, dive into that if you will.
Yeah, so.
I know the funding end, how they're funding campaigns, I don't know why though.
Yes, and I, I do not know why either, but I, I'll ask the question why.
Okay.
You know, why are developers funneling so much money into these PACs that are attacking me? Um, why are they funding Karen Rose's campaign, you know, in huge percentages?
Now, I'm going to be fair too, are any PACs supporting you and putting out literature?
Yes, yes. I'm not putting out literature though.
How do they support you? Because I know most, like Tom, Tom Knight, he's getting attacked by C O P PAC.
Okay.
Um, I don't know which PAC is putting out stuff about you because I haven't seen any yet to my house, but, uh-
Oh, I'm sure you'll get it.
Well, and I want to be fair because I'm sure, I'm, some, I'm sure, and I don't know if their PACs are supporting you and what they're doing. And also sometimes I will tell you that you can't control it.
You, as a candidate, you, you, you-
You can't ignore it, you got to accept that, you know they're doing it.
Yeah, I can't control what PACs do around, you know, my candidacy and I'm sure Karen can't control that either, but I would like to know why. Why are developers, um, wanting to have an influence on our school board? And I don't, I don't think there's a place for that, just like I don't think there's a place for politicians on our school board, I don't think there's a place for developers. I think it should be run by parents and educators, full stop.
All right, uh, school board is a hundred percent responsible for the teachers walking away, there's no support and they don't even both to show up, bother to show up, I think she meant. Um, all right, so why don't you go ahead and anything I missed, um, because I'm not sure if I missed anything. If any questions will come up, why are the developers funding her though? What is the reason?
Why are developers funding me?
I think it, it says, why are the developers funding her though? What is the reason?
I don't have any, I don't have any developers.
All right, and I, I don't know the funding source, I haven't seen it, so I have no idea. Um, but she says they're not right now. All right. You're not asking questions, you're hurling accusations. It's funny, I've, I've had, I've had, who, um, this is Holly, I even asked her a question. Um, I've had what I think might be left-wing people that don't like it and then some people say, oh, I've lost all respect as you interviewed because I'm another candidate. And, and, you know, I, I asked you about L G B T Q, the acronym, I asked you about gender, about books. But you're still going to get hate everywhere.
I mean, listen, here's the thing, at the end of the day, if you believe in parental rights, if you believe that parents should have a seat at the table when it comes to educational decision-making, when it comes to, um, what happens in our schools, then you will put one on the school board.
Um, here's the move that came in. Alicia says, mental health does not belong in schools, it's a family choice and problem. It's dangerous for someone outside of your family to get involved in that. Brian, do you support Protect Our Girls resolution? I don't know what that resolution is. Do you know it?
Uh, yes, so mental health, I, I'm just going to have to agree to disagree here.
Oh, you can see it up there, okay.
I, I believe that mental health does belong in schools because children cannot learn when they are, um, struggling with other issues and children don't learn in a vacuum and the data absolutely supports mental health in schools. So, you know, if you don't want to vote for me based on that, that's fine.
All right. And what was that going down there?
Uh, do I support the Protect Our Girls resolution? No, I do not.
What is it?
So it was a resolution that was brought forth by Bridget Ziegler-
Okay.
-at a recent board meeting to defy the new Title IX, uh, guidance.
Okay.
So here were my concerns with that and I'll just, I'll lay it out for you, I've said it before, I put out a press release, but I'll say it again.
All right.
Um, my concern was, we had a resolution that was very hastily passed and Karen Rose was very, you know, uh, adamant that it needed to be passed that night right away.
All right.
Um, that said, that we as a school district were not going to follow the federal guidelines regarding Title IX. It was not written by a lawyer. It puts us in danger of losing federal funding, anywhere from fifty to a hundred million dollars. That's a lot of money for Sarasota County Public Schools. Um, and our lawyer, our school lawyer, who is a conservative by the way, said, you know, maybe we should put a pin in this, maybe we should have our legal team look at it, make sure it's solid before we send it out. He said, these, um, these new guidance doesn't even come into play until August first. So we have time. And then he said, um, in addition to it not coming into play August first, that there are other, um, battles in other states that will kind of flesh out what this looks like some more. And he was saying, there's no reason to rush this through right now, you know, let's do our due diligence. And when we're talking about spending, you know, or potentially losing, I should say, potentially losing millions of dollars, I think we owe it to our community to do our due diligence and, and find out what that looks like. You know, that's the money aspect of it. In a personal way, I object to this rhetoric that children of any type, LGBTQ, trans, whatever, that children are dangerous to other children for existing. I, I reject that. Um, we're talking about children and the fact that, that as adults, we're promoting this sort of rhetoric about these children, to me, is very concerning.
Okay. Um, you know, I do have a question, it's kind of funny, it's kind of not.
Okay.
Uh, theories, furries?
Furries?
And kitty litter and bathrooms.
Oh my God, one more person. Frank. Um, I can tell you firsthand, we have no litter box within any of our schools. Um, that, that's not a thing.
Okay.
It's just not a thing.